Another meeting of the Planning Commission on October 15, 2018 come to order. Will you join me in the pledge to allegiance of the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our
Thank you. May we have roll call?
Commissioner Roof?
Present.
Commissioner Yakapony?
Present.
Commissioner Dugan?
Present.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Present.
And Chair Bradley?
Present. Thank you. First, we have public comment. Public comment is limited to items not on the agenda. The commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act. That's Government Code, Section 54954.2. However, the Planning Commission's general policy is to refer items to staff for their attention or have a matter placed on a future Planning Commission agenda for a more comprehensive action or report. Next, we have the approval of the minutes for the October 1, 2018, meeting. Have you all had a chance to review them?
Yes. I, uh...
Any changes?
Not on my behalf. No changes for me.
Yeah, I'll move to approve the minutes as stated.
You second that?
Commissioner Roof?
Yes.
Commissioner Yakapony?
Yes.
Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Abstain.
And Chair Bradley?
Yes. Next is a public hearing. Procedures for public hearings of the Planning Commission in San Carlos are: The staff will present a report on the history, physical features, on the application, followed with the staff's recommendations. The applicant will then make a presentation. Thereafter, interested members of the community may speak on that proposal. When all interested parties have had an opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed and no further discussion from the floor can be held at that time. The Planning Commission will then consider evidence and make its recommendation. If you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else has raised at a public hearing described in this notice, the public notice, or in written correspondence delivered to the city prior to the public hearing. Speakers should fill out a speaker's form found by the door back in the corner there and hand it to the recording secretary prior to addressing the Planning Commission. The speaker should come up to the microphone to speak since the meeting is being recorded. This will assist the staff in their accurate preparation of the minutes. We have three cases tonight, proposed amendment to zoning ordinance, and then next is 727 Laurel Street downtown, and lastly is 815 Sherry Lane. The first one, proposed amendment to zoning ordinance, San Carlos Municipal Code, Chapter 18.24, perenn wireless communications facilities, parentheses, and proposed removal of the San Carlos Municipal Code, Chapter 12, 12 dot 32, perenn wireless communications facilities, parentheses. This item has been continued to the November 5, 2018, meeting. So we will move on with the second.
Through the chair, can we get a motion and a second to continue the wireless proposed ordinance to a date certain, which would be November the 5, 2018?
Yes, sorry, I forgot to do that. A motion to continue, I won't read it again, but to continue this case to the November 5, meeting.
I'll second.
Was that a motion by Chair Bradley?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm sorry, who was the second?
Commissioner Dugan.
Okay, just a quick roll call on that. David, Commissioner Roof?
Yes.
Commissioner Yakapony?
Yes.
Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
And Chair Bradley?
Yes. Thank you. So we'll take it up next in November 5. Next, the case 727 Laurel Street downtown, consideration of a request for design review for outdoor dining as part of the On Street Dining Pilot Program in San Carlos. We have a staff presentation.
Yes, we do this evening. I would like to introduce Planning Technician Rebecca Weisong. I believe this is the first time she's had the opportunity to present to the commission. Rebecca has been with the city for about six months, and so she's helping with staff, doing a lot of smaller projects, staff-level review, including review of applications of the sign ordinance. So she has a couple of items to present to you this evening. And before I turn it over to Rebecca, I would just also like to add for the item that she will be presenting on, we also have Adam Aronson, who is one of the city's economic development coordinators, and I can't recall if you've been to the commission before, but he's in the audience here tonight, and he is here to answer any questions the commission may have about the city council authorized On Street Dining Pilot Program. And with that, I will turn it over to Rebecca. Thank you.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. I'm Rebecca Weisong. Today, I will be presenting on design review for outdoor dining as part of the On Street Dining Program. So, city council authorized two restaurants to be part of the pilot program. This application is for design review for the second location at Pia Cherry's at 727 Laurel. So some background on the program. So in 2015, city council approved On Street, the On Street Dining Pilot Program. Two restaurants were approved as part of this program and to be, were authorized to be able to be part of the program. The selection committee received three different restaurants, and one was selected to go forward while the other two were asked for more information for future date. In 2016, Town, the first restaurant selected and approved through design review, was approved through Planning Commission, and they opened in 2017 and have been open for around 20 months at this point. In 2017, city council decided to postpone the second restaurant until the opening of Wheeler Plaza Parking that, which had a net gain of 67 parking spaces due to parking concerns after the closure of the original parking lot at Wheeler. In August 2018, city council decided to move forward with the second location. Staff reached out to the two other restaurants, and only one restaurant decided to go forward with the process, and that was Pia Cherry's. So here's the existing elevation of the site. As you can see, where the red arrows are are the three parking spaces that will be used for the On Street Dining facilities. So here are some of the, here is the selection criteria that was approved by Planning Commission, by city council, I'm sorry, for the pilot program. Two of the elements that I wanted to highlight is the high-quality design of material, which I will speak to later when I show the site plans and the different elements of the project. And the other one is the commitment to implementing measures to help offset use of public parking. So Pia Cherry's is doing the same measure that Town did, 10% of off the bill, up to $25 for customers that arrive by rideshare or by verifiable public transportation. So this is the site plan that was proposed for Pia Cherry's. The platform will take up three parking spaces in front of the restaurant. It will be constructed around the tree well that can be seen here, as well as the lamp post seen here. It will be angled and set back from the surrounding parking spaces in order not to interfere with the other parking spaces that will remain. It's required to have a five-feet setback. So here is a rendering of the proposed outdoor dining. So some of the materials that will be used are wood decking for the base and the benches and all of the exterior, as well as for all the metal details, it will be, they will use dark bronze, for example, for the partitions. There'll be a metal canopy structure with a retractable canopy, and we have sample, samples are available and we'll cast down of the materials that will be used. So some of the conditions of approval that I want to highlight are some extra ones that are not normally involved in outdoor dining, that are special because it's a pilot program as well as being on a public right-of-way. So the first one is that it's an 18-month, it has, it has 18-month operation. Normally, conditions of approval are indefinite and they do not have an end date, but because it's part of a pilot program, it is only approved for 18 months. It can be extended, Town's was extended, or it will, it can become permanent. City council is working on an ordinance to turn the program permanent if that happens and the site could possibly become permanent. Another condition is number five, is the revocable encroachment permit for operation. Because it is on public right-of-way, the city wanted to have some power, to have some liability, and required applicant to have more, a little bit more insurance, as well as allowing the city to have control in case of change of ownership, as well as in the case that the project ends, that they have right, that the applicant will have the responsibility to restore the public right-of-way to how it was before. Another requirement, number 10, is a maintenance plan is required. This allows the city to have some control of the maintenance of the platform, as well as the decks, the chairs in it, as it is part of the public right-of-way. The fourth, the, the fourth condition that I wanted to highlight is number 14, is that the existing sidewalk dining will require review by Public Works. Because they're getting more seating, we are requiring that they get a new encroachment permit for their existing sidewalk dining. Currently, our rule is that it has to go to the brick line, but Public Works is, is in the process of redoing their On Street Dining, and they're going restaurant by restaurant, so they will be, have to follow the new rules of 24 inches from the front instead of the brick line that has traditionally been used. Staff has received two letters, both regarding parking. One was from a resident, and the other was from a property owner on that block of 700. There's been no additional public comment. So there is a formal motion of approval if you wish to make it. I can answer any questions. The restaurant owner, architect, as well as our On Street Dining Coordinator, Adam Aronson, are here if you have any questions for them as well. Thank you.
Questions of the staff from the commission?
So Rebecca, I know that, you know, we're principally making a design review here and that this program's already been, you know, fully vetted, approved by Economic Development as well as the city council, but I am just curious, as far as, you know, this is an experimental program, Town has had this now for a year and a half, have there been any lessons learned? Was that just a success across the board? We want to expand the program, or were any concerns raised?
I'm gonna have Adam answer those questions.
Sure.
Yeah, I'd be happy to answer that. Yeah, so so far, the program has generally been received as a success. I know for Town in particular, it's been very successful. Their revenues have increased quite a bit from the program. I think, you know, people in the community tend to have mixed opinions on it. I'd say it's kind of split. Some people feel that it's made walking through where Town has on outside dining better. Other people think it's gotten worse. It's kind of a matter of opinion, I believe. But overall, I think people are generally happy with it, and the council's been happy with it and would like to move forward with it more.
Is there anything in particular that's made the walk-in through more challenging than expected?
I can't speak to anything that's made more challenging. I think one thing that has made it better is, I know with, at the Town location, staff submitted some stricter requirements for what they were currently previously doing with their tables, so before, the chairs would back out onto the sidewalk, and in order for them to get the On Street Dining, we required them to turn them so that they wouldn't back out anymore onto the sidewalk.
Yeah, I noticed Town doesn't have benches, right? It's just loose, so I didn't, this design does seem to be an improvement with benches because it kind of defines where the tables have to stay kind of tucked in, and that seemed to me, you know, in a way, I was looking for perhaps the tables to be affixed, but they're not affixed. Okay.
No, they are the same type of tables as they currently have for the rest of their sidewalk dining. So we'll match. The seating is fixed, but the tables are not.
The benches are fixed.
Yes.
Obviously, there will be chairs on the other side of the table. Is that right?
Yeah, so there's three sides that are a bench, and then there's chairs at the end.
Three sides of the bench, okay, yeah. I do think that'll be an improvement as far as people just backing out into the potential walkway.
I have a question. What is Town's parking mitigation approach?
So there, I believe they're doing the same as Pia Cherry. They're offering...
They have the same parking mitigation. They also have bike parking. They added an extra bike rack, but they also removed a tree, which Pia Cherry's is not. So they have the same 10% for, off, up to $25 for anybody who uses rideshare or verifiable public transportation.
Do we have any statistics as to how much that's used?
Yeah, so the owner of Town is able to provide that data to us, and in the last year, they've had 798 guests use that coupon. So that's over a year, about maybe two people or so each day.
And how is that program publicized, and is there any obligation for Pia Cherry to publicize it?
So at Town, they have table stands on all of the tables with a flyer mentioning the program, and then they also send it out through their newsletters to different guests.
It's actually at every table in the restaurant?
Yeah, it is actually checked this weekend.
Okay.
We can add that to the condition. They do have it as one of their conditions that they're required to have the 10% discount. Number 13.
I think, you know, to pick up on the thread here, great to have a program. I've been to Town enough and sat outside enough, and I'm actually surprised, pleasantly surprised to learn that that was available, and it's sort of not obvious. So it's not clear how to make this program more obvious, but, you know, big picture, what are we trying to respond to? It's parking and taking advantage of this offer. 798 guests in 18 months, 24 months?
I think 12 months.
12 months? Okay, so that's two a day. I don't know how many they turn, but it's, it's a small percentage of the guests, so has, has staff considered or had any dialogue with Town on how to improve uptake? Has there been that kind of conversation?
Nothing at this point. I think that'd be something to pursue if we go to make the program more permanent, something more quantifiable that can be tracked.
Maybe the applicants tonight could share their thoughts on marketing beyond, just I'll say passive, how they might encourage people to take advantage of that, so.
Item 13 in the code compliance certificate says, "This discount shall be in effect for the duration of the pilot program, period." So it's, is that accurate here, too?
Yeah, that's what, that's what...
And with Town?
Oh. Oh, like pilot program period, yeah, so the period of the pilot program. Yeah, so that's when it will, and then, once the pilot program's over, they will have a new, if it goes permanent, they'll have a new code, they'll have a new...
And through the chair and through the rest of the commissioners, my understanding is that with this sort of opportunity to have a pilot program in the, in the city, this is, you know, the time where we're getting information about how the program is being used. Adam just mentioned the 798 guests per certain period of time. So once the council, this is brought back before the council to consider whether even to make it permanent, a lot of this information can be presented before the council so they can determine, you know, if there is, you know, a knee, or if there's a desire to maintain the program, but maybe you want to strengthen some of the provisions or the requirements for offsetting parking, that can be looked at, at that time. But I think at the moment, the idea or the spirit of the program is just to limit it to a maximum of two, and then collect the data and see how it's working, is my understanding.
Thank you.
I believe there's a limit on how many per block. I was on the subgroup for this.
Yes, so it's one per side of block.
Yeah, so, I mean, the parking's a concern, but there was also a limit put on how many could be built on any given side of the block.
And is that over a three-block or four-block stretch? Can you remind us?
So the, during the selection period, the restaurants that were allowed were between 600 and 800 blocks, but there were only three that applied.
And both these are in the 700 block?
Yeah, so we had two others after, and these were, Town was the first selected, and then, once we went forward for the second selection, this other restaurant, the third restaurant, decided not to go forward with the program.
And the applicants here, who wish to make a talk to us?
Hi, my name's Ray Viati. I'm the architect on the project. I'm here to answer any additional questions you guys might have on the proposal. As for additional advertising for taking public transit or Uber, I haven't talked to that with the owner of the restaurant yet, but I could see doing additional advertising, like on the menu, or if they're sending flyers out, putting a note on those, so it's a little bit more present to the public as they come.
I guess what I had, what I was thinking was that if there was something that was different from what's been done, we might learn from, does Pia Cherry get any more uptake than, than Town just by virtue of advertising? So it seemed like an opportunity for the city and staff to learn, and I, you know, I'm not thinking of billboards or radio, right, just something simple, but...
I don't know, you could talk to the owner here if you'd like.
Can you come up front, sir? Thank you.
We do have a loyalty program. We advertise that on newsletters. We advertise on most major dining programs, like Google, like Yelp, like OpenTable. Those are the most respectful reservation systems, and we do everything possible because that's bring us business. That's, that's the direction we're going to. Social media, we are very heavily involved, and if anything, the time goes by, anything else will be possible, we'll do it. We're here to volunteer.
Do you have any particular plans to advertise the Uber discount?
Yes, we already promised that to the city. We said we're going to do that at the Uber.
To offer it, but how will your customers be made aware of the program?
There are several ways to do that. One is, will be on the website, our website. Second, will be on the table tents. Fourth will be some, some other materials we use when we have any, any promotions like happy hours. We will do that according to, to all those, whatever we do for special event, we will do it for, for Uber as well. And also, also we have Yelp Wi-Fi that will send all the diners messaging. They tell, tell them about, about promotions.
And those are all good possibilities. Did, did staff consider, is there any obligation for them to publicize this, or is it just an understanding that it's in everyone's interest that the public be made aware of this?
It is a requirement that they do that, but there's nothing specific about how they do that. It's certainly a condition that could be, you know, inserted into the approval if that's the desire of the commission. You know, maybe you don't want to specify exactly what, but to the effect that to use, you know, a wide range of, of different ways to publicize the, the, the program.
Okay. I, I frequent this restaurant, and so I must, I need to disclose that I have spoken with the owner, not at length, but briefly, about this project.
I have a question. Can, can the, can we ensure that the data is collected for similar to the 798 statistic we have for Town?
Currently, I believe Town is doing that. There wasn't, I don't believe there was a specific condition imposed upon Town that they need to collect the data and then give it to the city by, within certain time increments. But if the commission felt it would be a good idea to include that as a condition on this approval, you could do that. We're getting the information from Town. I believe the owner has decided to provide that voluntarily, so that's something the commission could consider.
Would, would there be any issue with providing?
Because of this purpose of this, we installed new software called Toast. Toast will collect the data for each, each department of the restaurant, patio, bar, and main dining room, and banquet. The software is already there. Day is already there.
Yeah, I think it'd be essential to fulfill the pilot purpose of this, that we obtain data. So that, sounds like you would not object to having that be a condition?
Password to the city, they can go ahead.
I suspect they would rather you just told them.
Okay, thank, thank you. Are there any other speakers wanting to speak?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Just a real light-touch design question. The screening on the top, on the back, what, what's the intent?
The intent is a screening on the top for, to provide shade during the summertime and actually to some protection in the wintertime if it starts to rain. Originally, the screen was intended to be opaque so we get a little bit more sun in this, and during the day, but I was talking, as Tony would like to do it a little bit more solid for the wintertime also.
Understood. And, and the back, the vertical face is open?
The vertical face is supposed to be open. I actually do want to add one screen on the, on the south-facing side to help act as a wind block that will be retractable also, because we get a lot more wind coming down our side of the street.
And is there a plan for heating, heating elements out there?
Heating elements will be hanging from the metal, the steel frame that holds up the canopies. So it's gonna be tucked up as tight as we can.
The plant's gonna be real?
Yes.
Can, can you repeat about the, the opaqueness of the glass? Is that, is it...
No, it's, there, it's fabric. It's fabric. It's gonna be, it's actually gonna be a solid fabric. It's going to be, it's actually going to be a solid fabric on the top. Originally, it was going to be...
Solid, and then the vertical?
The vertical will be solid, they're both retractable, though.
They're solid?
Yes.
Is that what Town has?
They have umbrellas that are solid canvas.
Because the solid, I'm wondering about the solid, because it'll be sort of, from the street view, there'll be a wall, sort of a wall, opaque wall look, as opposed to visibly seeing the dining tables. Am I getting this right?
So what I was looking more to was to do one, only one panel at the end, on the south side of it, to help use that as a windscreen. I don't want to, I don't want to block off the backside, because then it's going to make it look like a closed-off structure, like you're defining. I'm just trying to protect it more from the rain and the sun was the original intention, and to keep it open, because originally, and the original design was similar to this, but I think staff thought it was a little bit too closed off, so I tried to open it up more with the simple framing and the awnings coming off the framing.
So, just, I'm sorry, I'm still a little unclear in this picture with the tables. I can see, I can see through...
Yes, that's going to stay open, just like that.
Is it just, it's this side?
Just that side, exactly. Just that one side, where you have...
It was the photograph, I mean, the rendering of the tables, the...
So if you pick up, pull up the rendering, this, the side closest to the left side, that one there, that would be the one that would have a panel that could drop down to help act as a windbreak, but the, all the rest facing the street would still be left open.
Okay.
All right, thank you. If there are no more, if anyone in the audience wished to speak on this project?
I had a final economic development question. Just for the general benefit of understanding how this trial program works, it sounds like we took some lessons, perhaps, from San Francisco, who's done this quite a bit. I'm curious, have they, are they still in a trial period with this, or is this a full-blown permanent installations when we see them up in San Francisco?
So I believe San Francisco is more permanent at this point, but I don't know if they're doing it for restaurants specifically, or if it's more, they're actually park space and open to anyone to use.
I've seen some, a couple restaurants. I was wondering if you guys were studying that or not. So my more specific question is, is the idea of this being for zero rent, is that, is the intent for just the trial period? Does the city intend to monetize this over time?
Yeah, so the fact that they're not paying any rent for the use of the space right now, that's just for the pilot program, and that was just because there's always the chance we might remove them if the pilot program's not made permanent. And so the idea is that when it becomes permanent, there'd be some sort of amount charged for the space that we would study and determine.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, could I just ask the applicant or Mr. Viati, one other question? That is, if you knew this was a permanent program now, would you have designed it any differently? Because you knew you'd have a longer period to get your money back?
No, I don't think so. I think I tried to come up with a, I mean, we went through three or four different iterations. I mean, you've got a screen that goes on the backside, trying to come up and maximize the amounts, the maximum amount of seating you could get into the area, and then dealing with shade, light, and still trying to keep it open. The thing, the only thing that would change, I was looking more towards more open flexible seating, similar to Town. Tony was the one that said, let's try and do booth seating here, so that's why we ended up doing that. If it were more permanent, I'd probably change the materials so they wouldn't be as high maintenance. That would be the, that would be the big difference of it. But other than that, I probably wouldn't change the design. The design would stay the same, I'd probably change the materials a little bit more so I wouldn't, so they wouldn't have as much of a maintenance issue with them.
Thank you very much.
If there are no more questions, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I motion to close the public hearing portion. Second that.
Commissioner Roof?
Yes.
Commissioner Yaccaponi?
Yes.
Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
Chair Bradley?
Yes.
For discussion, I would just say, you know, I like this program. I think everyone likes dining al fresco. I like seeing it in San Carlos with the parking mitigation program. You know, I think that's a nice, you know, I don't think anyone needs to, it's this nice program that it almost can be completely offset with subsidized Uber, and I think that's a nice, for folks to take an Uber to a restaurant. Might even help wine sales, I don't know. The, so I'm supportive of this. I would just say, I think I do want to think through, and I'd appreciate the thoughts of the other Commissioners on the right way to put a condition in about publicizing the Uber program, because I do think that's an important part of this. Perhaps just open language, like it's, I mean, we could say on the menu, that might be a heavy condition, maybe just that it's readily accessible information as you are in the restaurant, or something to that effect. And then I do just think, stipulating that the data will be provided to the city as requested on how many Uber redemptions have happened.
Thank you.
I have a question for staff, and that is, in thinking through the program and being responsive on this comment about people walking through the dining, can you say again, how, what's the thinking to keep that corridor wide so that, you know, two groups of people could pass each other without having to bump into each other while still they're having patrons out on the sidewalk?
So as part of the conditions of approval, they're required to get their current sidewalk dining reviewed again, so to ensure that there is enough room for people to walk through. They will have to, well, Public Works will review it, because they are, be the ones who will give them the encroachment permit in terms of parking, sidewalk dining.
Thank you. A question following on that. Town, we have experience with Town, I've walked past there and have not felt overly crowded. Is the width of the clear area the same for Town as this proposal?
I think Rebecca might be looking for that information. I'm not quite sure if it's in the staff report, but my understanding is that is one of the reasons why the Public Works Engineering Division is looking at this issue, because of some of the challenges that may have happened in the past, and that had to do with the way the chairs were oriented, you know, not really wanting the chairs to sort of back out into the sidewalk area, but be positioned in a different location, and also to measure a specific distance. I think Rebecca mentioned in her presentation that in the past, the area that was reserved for the dining on the sidewalk area was out to the first red brick demarcation line, but Public Works is now taking a different approach, instead of doing that, because that actually is, changes a little bit from block to block or area to area, so they're standardizing a specific dimension that all of the on-street dining would need to abide by. So these are incremental changes or improvements that the city is trying to make to keep that on-street dining, you know, where it should go and have that really work in a way is to help ensure that the sidewalk area is open for passer-bys.
So to clarify, that on-street dining regulation is sort of independent of this specific proposal, that that would be generally applied?
Correct, but there is a condition attached to this to ensure that, on one hand, they have the on-street dining, so making sure that that's whatever is needed, if there's anything that is needed in that area that needs to be adjusted, that there, the applicant would be required to do that, obviously, as they're asking for the on-street approval of the on-street program. So those two work together.
And Public Works is going through all those sidewalk dining as it already, so they would have to go through it as, anyway, so it's just, they would have to do it a little earlier than they would have otherwise.
I tend to think this is a much superior design with the bench and booth configuration. I think that will define and help keep those tables where they should be. I do think at Town, they can drift out, as people don't want to be crowded against the plants. Was this design coached in that direction, anyway, or this is just what they came up with, with the booth configuration?
This is the one they came up with. This was the one they designed.
Okay, I mean, I would just make the observation that that's a point that might want to be looked at over time, and I, I think we will find this booth configuration might be a standard we like, because I think the tables will stand much better control with this configuration.
We'll take that into consideration when they come to go to City Council.
I like the design. It looks, to me, it looks quite pleasing, and I haven't encountered any problems walking by Town many times, and so I'm, I think it's a positive, a positive addition for Laurel Street, and I think it looks good.
To Commissioner Dugan's point, I'm interested to maybe suggest that the applicant make best efforts on their normal advertising materials to include a specific mention of the discount in exchange for a ride-share use, and that way, it'll be part of what they're normally doing, so no, you know, no additional expenditure, but just a little extra copy.
Yeah, I agree, the two conditions that we've raised, the, about the data collection and the, and some wording about the advertising, it would be nice to have that be explicit.
And if you like, staff can certainly add those two additional conditions. They would be added as conditions number...
Twenty-one. Twenty-one. It would be condition number 21 and 22.
21 and 22. And like, I think the Commission is suggesting the language, you know, not be specific, but that the applicant is required to, you know, advertise, advertise, basically advertise the program.
Yes, that'd be great. Make best efforts to advertise the program in normal or ongoing marketing, marketing communication.
Yeah. At least, I might just suggest appending it to condition 13. This discount should be in effect for the duration of the pilot program, period, and will be publicized on a best efforts basis.
We can do that, too, if that's the Commission's pleasure.
I'm good with that.
Then I will move that the Planning Commission approve the design review of the project at 727 Laurel Street, APN 050154210, based on the findings and for the reasons incorporated in the staff report, and as conditioned in the Code Compliance Certificate with those two new stipulations.
And I'm sorry, just to be clear, the second stipulation is that the data on the ride-sharing program will be provided to the city as requested?
Yes.
Okay.
I second.
Okay, Commissioner, Commissioner Roof?
Yes.
Commissioner Yaccaponi?
Yes.
Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Abstain. I was on the subcommittee, so I don't feel like it's right for me to vote.
And Chair Bradley?
Yes. Motion passes. Congratulations.
Congratulations, good luck, look forward to seeing it in play.
And the next item is 815 Cherry.
I'm Raka Weisong. This evening, I will also be presenting consideration for design approval for a freeway-oriented wall sign. As many of you guys are newish to the Commission, per our municipal code, every sign that is oriented towards Highway 101 requires Planning Commission approval. And this site is located just south of Holly, in between industrial and the freeway, and Highway 101. So the site, the sign will be east-facing along the facade of the building, oriented, facing Highway 101. This site is allocated 100 square feet of signage per our sign code. So the applicant proposes a 65-square-feet freeway-oriented sign that will read Blue Oak Tap Room and Brewery. The words are comprised of five-foot-deep, internally illuminated, channel letters painted white. The letters that read Blue Oak are 12 feet tall, and the letters that read Tap Room and Brewery are approximately 27 feet tall, and the total dimensions, the proposed, 27 inches tall, I'm sorry. The total dimensions of the proposed signage are 27 inches in height and approximately 29 feet wide. The previous sign at this location was similar in size, as well as in the same position along the building. Staff receive no comments or letters regarding this project. And here is the formal motion if you wish to approve this project, and the applicant from SignWorks is here, if you have any questions for him.
Does the applicant wish to speak?
There's not much there to really explain. They're internally illuminated channel letters, they're LED-lit, very low on voltage and usage. It basically replaces the identical sign. I personally installed the Alno German Kitchen sign, and I don't know why they shut down so quickly and left, you know, it's kind of a sad situation, but I don't know the details. And I'm replacing it with almost identical, removed the existing sign and put this one back on.
Do you, can you say, will the sign be on all night long, or is it restricted during certain hours?
It will be on a timer, and it's up to the client to leave it on all night or change it. I haven't specified that. In general, I don't get involved with that. Neither does the city. I've never been asked from the city any kind of restrictions on timing and the amount of hours that is lit. Being that it's across from 101, probably is not a huge issue, because there are no residential in that area, and I doubt if anyone would complain about it. I would guess the idea is to have it on all night for the best, you know, effect on advertising. The client probably wants people to see it and get some sort of a name recognition out of it, so. It's probably the most important part of the sign, because a sign in that particular location is actually, you know, you see the sign and finding the location are two different things, as you know. So it's an obscure location, but the sign will bring a lot of brand recognition for them.
Is there any difference in illumination on this sign versus the one that's there today?
No, the other one was red, mostly, all red, and this one is, I believe, part white.
It's all white.
But the same wattage of bulbs, or...
Yes, for the most part. This one has a couple, three other letters to it, so, you know, but I believe the power supplies are the same. Two 260-watt power supplies is energizing this sign, so.
Okay.
It's a UL-listed product. It's fabricated in a UL-listed factory. I don't fabricate these things. We design them, send them for fabrication, and then we install them, so they meet all the standards that are supposed to be for electrical and output of lighting, whatnot.
The Blue Oak Craft Brewery is in operation now. The Blue Oak Craft Brewery is in operation now, is it not?
I believe they are.
I looked at the site, and it looked like they were open.
So they just extended it into the Alno Kitchen part, they just received a minor use permit a few months ago to extend their business into what was the Alno Kitchen, so their site doubled, and so now they have that as part of their property where the sign will be located.
May, a question for staff, the other tenants in this block, do they also have rights to put signage on that same face of the building, or is it kind of the luck of the draw of this tenant, because their rental space faces the 101, that they're the only ones who can use it?
Because it's along their frontage, they're the only ones who are allowed to use it, it's based on where your site is located, the only time we allow joint signage is on monument signs and signage like that.
Thank you.
Well, my standard speech kind of goes like this, I'm opposed to signs that are distracting on freeways, regardless of their sign or brightness or design, however, in this case, it's not one of those 55-foot-in-the-air signs, it's just on the side of that business's building, and not all that large, just over two feet by less than 30 feet, I think it is a safety hazard, however, still.
In the defense of the sign itself, it's set back quite a bit from the freeway, it's not directly at the edge of the freeway, if you really, when you drive by, there's a huge parking lot there, you know, so it really jumps at your face, I've driven by many times, I do that admiring my own signs once in a while, if you don't mind me saying that, but this particular one does set back quite a bit.
Anything else, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak for or against this project, will you come up, sir?
I am Mike Sager, and I'm a resident of San Carlos, and I'm familiar with that site, and the Blue Oak Brewery, there are facilities on the other side of that wall, and it's my understanding that that sign for the kitchen business, that is auto-business, was approved by the city not less than, what, two years ago?
It was approved in May of 2017.
Thank you, so the city approved the exact same site fairly recently, and now we have a small business that is expanding on that exact same premise, so, to me, it's, there's no harm, no fall, the other side is the San Carlos Airport, and so it's not impeding any residential on the other side as well, those are my only comments.
Thank you, and did you get his name?
You're not required to, but for the record, it would be great if you could fill out a public comment form, and you can drop it out with me, thank you, sir.
Thank you, any discussion? Move to close public debate. Second.
Yes.
Commissioner Yakaponi?
Yes.
Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
And Chair Bradley?
Yes.
I would just like to disclose that I purchased a sign from Mr. Belushiyan for installation on a building in Redwood City about four years ago, so I'm going to abstain from this one.
Thank you, any other discussion, and the public hearing is closed, so we'll entertain a motion.
Yeah, I move that the Planning Commission approve the request for design review approval of approximately 65 square feet for Blue Oak Craft Brewery at 815 Cherry Lane, based on the required findings and for the reasons as outlined in the staff report. I second the motion.
Thank you.
Commissioner Roof?
Yes.
Commissioner Yakaponi?
Yes.
Commissioner Dugan?
Abstain.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
And Chair Bradley?
Yes. Thank you, it passes, thank you, gentlemen.
That concludes our cases, and now we get into reports, correspondence, general information, staff first?
Yes, through the chair, the first item is report on recent City Council actions, and as most of you are aware, the City Council recently heard, as you were all there, at a joint meeting, the proposal for changes to the RS6 zoning district to address single-family house size, and at that meeting, the City Council decided to continue the public hearing to Monday, October the 22nd, and that is all the updates that I have for you on that item, I will add that if the commission is interested, as you may recall, the City Council, some of the City Council members had specific requests or questions for additional information, staff will be responding to those requests, if any of the commissioners are interested in receiving that additional information, staff would be happy to send that over to you via email, or if you'd like a hard copy, we can prepare one for you as well, just let us know, we'd be happy to give that to you. In addition, because you were there last time, there is, there won't be a joint meeting at the October 22nd, you know, City Council meeting, however, the commission is certainly invited to attend, if you do choose to speak during public comments at the meeting, we just ask that you don't speak on behalf of the commission, you just can speak as an individual, so, but you are, and I checked with the city clerk, so I just wanted to clarify that, I think, I know you all are following this closely, so if you actually wanted to attend the meeting, you're certainly welcome to do so, and that's all I have for item A.
Anything else?
Is there any expectation that this might get sent back to the Planning Commission, or is it, or no?
That has happened, in other jurisdictions that I've worked for, a particular item can go to City Council, and I've seen City Council send it back, but my understanding, or at least my impression, is there wasn't an indication of that, at least not at this time, of course, we'll see what happens on the 22nd.
Thank you.
Any other announcements? Rebecca, you did a nice job. Welcome to...
Yes, very good job, Rebecca, thank you, in terms of correspondence, there were two, we only received two comment letters on the item that you heard this evening, and those are available on the dais as we mentioned before, and then to conclude, the next regular meeting for the Planning Commission is scheduled for Monday, November the 5th, and on that evening, we will be bringing forward a proposed amendment to the city's Wireless Telecommunication Facilities Ordinance, and that is in large part to catch up with some of the FCC requirements, as well as to address the impending applications for small cells, for any of you that may be following telecommunications, you know that 5G is on the horizon, and there's many reasons for that, lots of different things happening, self-driving cars, et cetera, so it's new technology that we expect to see, so we're amending the ordinance, and that's probably as much as I can talk about it this evening, we'll talk, get to talk about it on November the 5th.
I would just ask, I think there potentially might be concern in the community about cell tower, even if they're small, being located right in neighborhoods like that, I'm just curious, is there going to be any additional effort to publicize that this is on the agenda, or will this be a, you know, out on Thursday, meeting on Monday kind of thing?
We have our social media outlets, and we can certainly use those, yeah.
I would recommend that, it's, I think this is a bigger issue that probably ought to be known in the community.
Thank you.
Will we be addressing the proposed changes, will we, we had that project last year where we ended up with a big tower because of the, when they cut down the pine tree, which wasn't covered by our special, our special permit process, and as a result of that, we wanted to tighten up the code regarding the maintenance and coverage of the cell towers, is any of that being addressed in this?
Yeah, the entire ordinance is being reviewed, so I'll have to, I mean, right now, I can't recall specifically what those are, but all of that would be brought forward to the Planning Commission, the entirety. In addition to that, there is a new multi-family project that is being proposed at 782 Elm Street, I believe the total number of units is four units total, it's replacing one house, but it's in the RM59 zoning district, so that's at 782 Elm Street, I believe we may be bringing forward another freeway-oriented sign at 201 Industrial, and then I believe there may be a change to the Palo Alto Medical Foundation, which is right over here on Industrial, that was approved via a planned development permit, planned development plan, as well as a development agreement, I believe there's some amendments being proposed to the development agreement, so anytime there's a change to the development agreement, that comes forward to the Planning Commission as well, so we have a handful of potential items to cover on November the 5th, but I will be taking a close look at the agenda to make sure we can manage it all, not putting everything on the agenda, and then, as you all know, we're approaching November and December, and so it's the holiday season, and if you are, if any of the commissioners may not be available, because it's that time of year, I would just ask as a friendly reminder to let staff know in advance, just to make sure that we have a quorum, so our next meeting is November 5th, the one after is November 19th, and then in December, we have December 3rd and December 17th, and actually, Commissioner Roof reminded me to give this reminder, because he informed me that he will not be available on December 3rd, so if any other commissioners have other obligations that would impact attendance, just please let me know, and that is all I have for you this evening.
I have, for the Palo Alto Medical Foundation, the planned development, that's a new, new situation for me as a planning commissioner, having some background on what our prerogative is on that would be, would be useful.
We can certainly provide some background information to you in advance.
No.
Certainly, absolutely.
...hospital with about 100 beds, and then they changed before construction to, it's not really a hospital, it's a clinic now, but who knows, we'll see what comes forward.
Just sort of understand the role of the Planning Commission, save some time, perhaps, in the meeting, if we're sort of already comfortable with what our scope of what we can, what we can address.
Certainly, thank you. Meeting's adjourned.